We're live, Mrs. Thomas.
Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Remind everyone that a school board workshop is intended for discussion purposes only. No board action will be taken. Citizens may email questions and public comments on the agenda items to the Elsworth School Board Vice Chair, Paul Markosian, at pmarkosian@elswhoreschools.org. Those submitted questions are asked to provide their full name. Item one on the agenda, the update of status for the fall of 2020. Before we begin, I would like to remind people that in past summers, summers are used to sort of rewrite, revitalize staff, administrators. It's a time of a little bit of relaxation. This summer has been totally different. And I, for one, would like to thank everyone who has put in long hours and hard work to come up with a plan or the beginnings of a plan for this ensuing school year. So, thank you. And I believe you're on, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas, and appreciate your comments. And I would echo that, you know, the group that has been working on this, along with all the people they're using for resources, have done yeoman's work to get us to the point we are at. And I appreciate your acknowledgement of that. I also appreciate the opportunity tonight to provide our board members, staff, students, and parents with an update on the status of the planning for the Elsworth School Department Framework for reopening schools, in particular, an update since what we provided at last week's workshop. Members of the collaborative planning group are with us here this evening to provide updates from their specific areas as applicable, answer questions that members of the board or members of the community may have. Now, please know that, however, there are still questions that remain without concrete answers and still, as late as about 10 minutes ago, evolving and changing guidance and information that we must navigate and incorporate into the process. But I also want the members of our community, parents, our students, our staff, to know that we are cognizant of the need to provide as much information as possible so that students, parents, and staff members can all make necessary arrangements and plans for the start of school. So I'll try to keep my comments brief. Online for frame approval. Back in June, when we first started talking about this, our intent was to have a framework in place for this evening so that families are approximately, get prepared for the start of the school year. We will have an update, but there are still some specifics that Tuesday, August 11th, at which time we hope to have a final framework based upon information that's current at that time for the board to consider and approve, which would include an instructional model and structure of a schedule that would be helpful to all those that need to plan. Couple that with a vote, we're going to be asking the board to take that night to amend the start date for students in the 2020-21 school calendar so that we will start with students on September 8th instead of September 1st. So the first thing I'd like to address is to provide an update on the Department of Education's Framework document, in particular, a clarification of the color-coded risk system and the health and safety requirements that were outlined in that document. Since the release of the color-coded system for the counties in Maine, there has been some confusion. As we know, all of Maine was designated as a green. But let me just talk a little bit about what that means. And in the color coding system, the first update was for that to be updated bi-weekly. Any county that receives a red does a high risk for spread and all remote instruction is advisable by the Department of Nation. It is a moderate risk and hybrid instructional models are advisable. Counties that are assigned a green designation are considered relatively low risk for spread. And those according this from the Department of Education document, they may consider in-person instruction as long as they are able to implement the health and safety requirements. It is great that we received a designation. It means that we are considered low risk. However, in order to implement an instructional model, we need to make sure that we can comply with the health and safety requirements that are provided. The first one I'd like to start with, which I think is truly indicative of the model that we will be moving towards, is the requirement for spacing in schools. We use the requirement for spacing in schools, this health and safety requirement, to help us to determine a capacity with which we can safely and in compliance with the health and safety requirements, bring students and staff back into our schools. I just would like to read from a specific DOE document. Adults must maintain a six feet of distance from others to the extent possible. Maintaining three feet of distance is acceptable between and among students when combined with the other measures. I'd like to provide a couple of things that people understand. When three feet was introduced into the list of health, safety requirements, some interpreted that to mean that we can reduce our distance to be three feet in between students. That are in understand this classroom in our school where we have our desks spaced six feet apart. In doing so, we have provided an allowance for student movement or teacher movement within the classroom. If you think about being in a classroom, if a student needs to come from their desk and go to the teacher's desk for individual instruction spaced six feet away, or they need to use the restroom, or a teacher needs to go and assist a student closer to their desk, having a six-foot distance between desks and tables permits an individual to walk through that aisle and still maintain a three foot of distance in between themselves and another person. If your aisles were only three feet apart, you could not maintain that distance. So with our framework, the interpretation is we will have our model classrooms and all classrooms set up with six feet of spacing in between desks and tables so that students can retain a six-foot spacing and adults can retain a six-foot spacing. And there are allowances, just as I gave with examples, or another example such as passing time in between classes where in the size of always, it may be difficult to maintain a full six feet. With that being said, we set up a number of model classrooms in Elsworth Elementary Middle School, both the K through four grade span and the five through eight grades span and at Elsworth High School so that we could determine a number of student capacity that we could accommodate in conjunction with the health and safety guidelines. At EMS, based upon the six-foot spacing, we can accommodate 260 students. That's grades K through four. EMS grades five through eight, we 40 students. At Elsworth High School, grades nine through 12, 858 students. Those are far below the numbers of projected enrollment we have for those sites. EMS is 260, we have a projected enrollment as of today of 421. EMS grades five through eight, 240 students. We have a projected enrollment of 373. Elsworth High School, 258 students. Today, we have a projected enrollment of 499. For those who are wondering why we're not talking about the Adult Education Program or Hancock County Technical Center, as many of you know, our Adult Education Program has moved into a new space and Director Sargent is working with our maintenance director to establish what spaces are going to look like in there. They're also looking at the HVAC system and ensuring that we meet the health and safety requirements for using a site that is not one of our school sites. So we have not included projections for that site. With regard to Hancock County Technical Center, there are unique challenges in that school where the programs are a combination of classroom instruction and also work. The calculations are a little more challenging, but Director Bolz is working on that. So we don't have numbers for those this evening. What I hope to illustrate numbers along with the spacing is the number of students that we can, again, safely accommodate. Survey results. And again, I would like to thank everybody who responded to the most recent non-binding survey, either through technology, when the survey was first released on July 22nd, or by the follow-up phone calls that were conducted by our staff. And by the way, I would like to express deep appreciation to the staff members who came in and worked to contact directly over 300 families to gather information for this survey. As I stated at the workshop last week, the purpose of the most recent survey was to determine the number of families and students who would prefer to return to in-person instruction in compliance with the health and safety requirements and the number who would prefer to participate in a remote learning program if they were given the choice. We wanted these numbers to determine not we could a start-to-school model based on parental and student choice. On the results that we've received as of early this afternoon, we have received responses accounting for 856 out of our projected 1,293 students. By the way, that's a 67% return on the survey. Based on what we received, 77.5% would prefer in-person instruction while 22.5% prefer to participate on clearly defined expectations. When you prorate that to the projected enrollment of 1,293 students total, that translates to 1,005 students who would prefer to be in an in-person program, 86 who would prefer to be in a remote instructional model. Members of the board, I believe Director Corbin Ramos was able to send you those numbers broken down by grade level. We can run through those here if we need to, but also included in the numbers were the number of students who prefer to return to school, who would use school transportation, and the number of students who would prefer a learning program, who would like food service program. We collected that information so that Transportation Director Saunders could determine what bus runs would look like and so that Food Service Director Daley could work through the multiple logistics of determining how to provide food service to students who are receiving a remote program. So I guess I would ask board members, would you like to go through the specific grid level numbers? Would you like me to continue? I am going to come back to how the numbers translate. Welcome, welcome. Any questions at this point in time? Hearing none, I will continue.
Dan, before you continue, we're having, there's a little bit of lagging in your connection. It's, it's, it was, it's kind of come and gone, but I think it's, looks like it's going to persist and we're getting some, some members of the public are having a hard time hearing everything. So I think we're all getting the gist of it, but it might be helpful if you switched off your video.
Yep, I will. Markosian, I'm sure there are many people out there that would prefer the video to be off anyway.
I'm sure that isn't the case, but.
And to all those folks out there who are having difficulty hearing, I apologize. I have received a message that says my connection is unstuck. Switch that off. The next piece that I would like to share are the framework requirements from the Department of Education regarding instructional models. In the main Department of Education framework, we are required to prepare models for all eventualities. That includes an in-person instructional model, a hybrid model, which is a combination of in-person and remote instruction, and an all-remote instruction model. The in-person model, under this scenario, would be a case where all students would return to school for in-person instruction, as was in place prior to the emergence of the COVID-19 virus. However, our recommendation were we to be in that position would be to continue with several health and safety measures such as the pre-symptom screening checklist before students and staff come to school, handwashing and cough hygiene, and return to school requirements if someone has been ill, as outlined in the education document. I'll talk about the numbers here in a few minutes, but I want to reiterate that we are not able to have all of our students and staff in the building at the same time based upon the health and safety requirements. Based on the spacing at each site, we can accommodate approximately 60 to 65% of our students at EMS in both grade spans and approximately 50% of the students at Elsworth High School. Additionally, we have to consider maximum group sizes, which are no more than 50 students or staff members combined in a space or an area, passing time between classes, serving lunch, and other school traffic logistics. Thus, even with a green designation based upon those numbers, we cannot safely return all students to school and meet the health and safety requirements at this time. However, we have to have plans in place for that eventuality. We also have to plan for a hybrid, which again is a combination of in-person instruction consistent with health and safety requirements and remote instruction, which would have clearly defined expectations and timeframes. So right now, and I think this is important information for everybody, the collaborative planning group is looking at two hybrid models. One of them is a hybrid model based on family choice, which was the basis of the survey. Under this scenario, students and parents would be able to select either in-person or remote instruction for their students. Students selecting remote instruction would be committing to that mode of instruction for the length of a ranking period, which would be a trimester at EMS and a ranking period, a quarter, excuse me, at EHS and HCTC. Students returning to in-person instruction would receive their instruction in classrooms and be inspected to comply with the health and safety requirements outlined in this framework. Unfortunately, when you look at the survey results and the capacities that I just listed, we are not able to do a hybrid model based strictly on family choice. Thus, the collaborative planning group is looking at two separate models on an alternative schedule. But just so people understand, under a hybrid model based upon an alternative schedule, students will have the option of selecting remote instruction and will have that choice honored. So in our survey, we're projecting as many as 286 students would prefer to have remote instruction. We would honor that for the students who select that. The remaining students, just over 1,000, would be divided into two groups and would receive a portion of their instruction through a remote instructional program and a production through in-person instruction. The different options start at this point. One of the options would be based upon a model as an alternating. Under one of the considerations, we would have a maroon group and a gray group. The maroon group would attend school in person on one day while the gray group, in-person instruction on the same day. The next day, they would alternate and they would switch back and forth as the days move forward. Students who had selected remote or trimester or a quarter would remain in a remote instructional program. That is one model and it has pros and cons. The second hybrid model based on an alternative schedule would still provide that choice for remote instruction for the families who want it and be committed to it for a ranking period and would divide the remaining students who desire in-person instruction into two groups. This, one day of the week, the current planning would be a Monday where all students participate in remote instruction. And the two groups would have specific days each week. It may be a Tuesday and a Thursday for the maroon, for the gray group, in which there would be in-person or remote. One of the benefits of that model would be now, that is the model that we're looking at having, which is a hybrid model based on alternative schedule. There are those two variations and that is what our group is working to evaluate and determine which is the best model over the course of the balance of this week. I want people to understand that there are multiple factors to consider in determining which model is best to ensure consistent and equitable instructional programs for students, clearly defined guidelines and expectations for students and staff and our those guidelines and expectations would include scheduling, communication, grading, instructional time. Other things that we need to consider are what is the impact of childcare needs for our families when a student is in a remote instructional setting? Also, ensure that we have staffing that can accommodate the number of students that need remote instruction and who require in-person instruction. Additionally, please remember that in Hancock County, Elsworth High School has approximately 35 to 40% of our students who attend Elsworth High School are tuition students from other communities or in other school systems. Other school systems are considering similar schedules, so we have to factor in what transportation is going to look like and how we can ensure that students who are expected to be in school can access school on the days that are supposed to be in person. We also have to take into account the fact that Hancock County Technical Center receives students from all other high schools in Hancock County. And again, all the high schools in Hancock County are looking at schedules. What we're looking at, intend to be starting with, the other piece that I want to add just so people understand because it is a possibility, we are required to plan for what full remote instruction would look like in the event that hopefully does not happen. We are required to move into that direction. Under that scenario, all students would receive instruction through a remote instructional program based upon the remote learning plan for their specific school. It may include synchronous learning, which should be learning in real time via appropriate technologies, and some asynchronous learning, which could include prerecorded lessons to be viewed and reviewed by students and families at a time more convenient, work assigned to be completed in the form of units or projects by regularly scheduled class meetings, designated work time, and staff office hour, students could receive help. But regardless of the learning continuum model in place or the mode of instruction being received by each student, curriculum standards will be the same for all students and there will be clear and consistent expectations for scheduling, instructional time, assessments, grading, attendance, communication for all students. With regard to hybrid and remote care is obviously a concern for many of our families and understandably so, and our staff members. I continue to be in discussions with Peter Faragor at the YMCA regarding expanded options for childcare during the school day to possibly include space for those engaged in remote learning. We're optimistic that there will be spaces available for students in grades K through eight at the Moore Center where they could receive opportunities for childcare and to receive their Elsworth School Department instruction. Based on our conversations, we believe we can come up with a model will be, excuse me, the cost would be affordable and build on a per-day basis rather than a per-week basis. And I know that's a concern for many of our families out there. To be in school two days a week and out of school three days a week, daycare may not work for us because of the cost and the structure of payment. We believe that that can happen. The one thing that's important to remember would be in that model at the Y, excuse me, at the Moore Center, as our students would be receiving instruction in our programs, students who are participating in that would be required to meet the health and safety guidelines, as are the students who attend in our schools. One of the mention regarding childcare, and this comes from conversations that I had with a couple of parents, and I mentioned this at the last workshop, it is still my understanding, there are some parents who, depending upon the instructional model that we have, may be interested in collaborating with other families to provide space for their children when they're in a remote instructional setting. Certainly, that's not something that we can organize as a school system, but if you are considering such an arrangement with your students, please let your respective building administrators know as information may be helpful in our planning. Of other pieces that I would like to share, and then we can certainly open it up to our collaborative planning group to talk about some updates in their specific departments. I referenced a proposed school calendar change at the last workshop. I referenced it earlier in this meeting. We will be submitting a proposal to amend the 2020-21 school calendar to have a start date for students of September 8th as opposed to September 1st. We will be voting on that at the August 11th, 2020 board meeting. I know that collaborative planning group is supportive of this. In my conversations with the Teachers Association President Johnston, there appears to be support from the Teachers Association. I think we all recognize that this would be an appropriate use of days for staff, students, and families. And I am optimistic that the board, when you have a chance to look at the specific calendar, you would vote to approve it. It's also important to note that we would not be extending the school year on the other end. Department of Education Commissioner has issued a waiver of the student instructional days, so it would simply be a change from student days to staff days. I'll give them an opportunity to talk about it, but Foods, Rivers, and Transportation are continuing to work. Director Saunders and Director Daley, they continue to work on plans for half, cleaning, disinfecting, and so forth, but their meal service and bus route plans and schedules will be dependent upon the final hybrid schedule. They have some ideas, but once those schedules are determined and we have specific numbers of students, they'll be able to put those plans into place. I know Director Turnbull from the Facilities Maintenance Department is also here. He has been working over the past week reviewing our HVAC systems in our buildings with our providers and is making positive movement there. Personal protective equipment, as I mentioned, the Department of Education is providing us with a wide selection of PPE, but they're also recommending that families provide their children with their own face masks and coverings. That is absolutely an option for families. And in fact, if it would make it easier for our students to be able to comply with a requirement to wear a mask, if they wear one that they're comfortable with, I think that is an advantage. With that being said, based upon the supplies that we have coming, our intent would be to provide each student and staff member with two cloth masks which are reusable, along with the expectation that they are properly washed. For those students or staff members who would like to provide their own, our school nurses, Jackie Sandon, Chris Reinek, have, have or are preparing some information to provide to families so they will know what would be an acceptance, what would be an acceptable face mask or face covering. In closing, for my presentation, before I turn it over to members of our planning group, we are still working with the goal of presenting a plan for the restart of school for formal board consideration of approval at next Tuesday's board meeting. Again, we're keenly aware of the need for parents to have this information to facilitate planning and also for our staff members to facilitate planning. We also appreciate the boards and everyone else's understanding of the many complex variables, the changing guidance and requirements as we complete the planning process. Please don't know, however, that also what we present next week, and I hope it doesn't happen, but it would be subject to change based upon subsequent changes in data, color-coded risk designation, guidance, or requirements that are posted. So I appreciate the time to present, Mrs. Thomas. And again, I have, we have, excuse me, members of our collaborative, collaborative planning group here this evening who can provide updates from their department and can also field questions from the board. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Whoops, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I'm going to let board members go first, Mr. Markosian. Jen, go ahead.
I just had a couple of questions to clarify with Dan. I assume we're going to be looking for a response from every family before we can get the details of the planning going. So I'm wondering if it would make sense to do another robocall? You know, as an alert for parents to go fill out that survey if they haven't done so already. I don't know if that would help with the ones that we haven't reached. That was just.
Jen, I think that's a great question. You know, one of the pieces over the next couple of days in the planning group talk this morning about what steps do we need to take to determine which of the two hybrid models we will be proposing. Once we have those, we are going to need to reach out specifically to parents because, again, as we talked about, that was one of the challenges some families had about filling out the previous survey. They were concerned it would be binding. Again, it's kind of a cat and mouse thing. We needed the information to help us determine whether or not we could make a certain model work. But once we have a model, it will be either through a robocall or direct calls to talk to families because some of the considerations will be cohort groups so that families who have multiple children. Outreach with families, Jen, and we're working on that over the next two days as to what's the most efficient way to make that happen. I would also qualify that by saying, once we have the model in place, we have a mode of very detailed elements that we need to put in place. we have a mode of very detailed elements that we need to put in place.
Okay.
So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, lost you a little bit, but that's okay. And then another question to clarify, students that have chosen to return to in-person instruction, will there be a period of time where they can select to go remote if that isn't working out for them, like kind of like that ad drop period of school?
That hasn't been a specific in-detail topic of our conversations. We have focused on the opposite. The reason that we're asking families who select remote, and we honor that choice, to stay remote for a specific period of time is so that we don't get in a situation and we end up having more students than we can.
Okay, I don't think that is saying the other way. If they choose in-person, will there be an opportunity?
I think that's much easier to accommodate.
So it would arrive at a day where they would need to feel comfortable, or is that gonna be free choice?
Jen, I'm gonna ask you to repeat that. Maybe my internet connection.
That's okay. Would we come up with a time period where they would choose, if they were, would them be able to go remote? Would that be flowing so that at any point in person, could they go to remote?
These two models, I would want our planning group to determine what that timeframe would be, if any. There would need to get structured, and we need to communicate that.
Mr. Mark. Would it be possible to email the variations of models and survey numbers provided to our families?
Can you ask that question again? Did not get it. Again, it's my internet connection.
Ms. Mason is asking if the very, the various models and also the survey numbers that you've referenced and spoken about, will they be provided to families in the form of email communication or posting on our website?
Yes, we can share the results of those surveys and those numbers. There's nothing in there that would be a violation of FERPA. Again, that was a non-binding, non-binding survey, but we can post those on our website.
And the very, the variations, the various the models we have for reopening that framework for return to school. I feel like my understanding is that's still being fleshed out and what you have now is not something that's ready to be released to the public, but I'm, I guess the question is, would you be, when do you think that might be made public as a document?
The goal of the planning group, and I would welcome our members to also chime in, was to try and come to a conclusion on which of the two models best met the checklist of characteristics to best serve our students and staff and community. And we're hoping to have that by Wednesday or Thursday of this week. Again, that may be ambitious. But we are meeting again Wednesday afternoon. So you're right, Mr. Markosian. Right now, with the number of details and variables that are in there, it's not ready for a presentation other than what we've shared tonight. But I would anticipate, hopefully by the end of the week, we could provide some details. And I would also say that those models, because we're dealing with different grade spans, you know, what you see as a model at EEMS grades K through four, while we're still looking for the concepts of equity, consistency, and clear expectations, may not look exactly the same as Elsroth High School or Hancock.
Mrs. Thomas, I have another question from Paige Morse, asking about life skills program. Where many are in a self-contained setting, they tend to need increased support and have therapy needs. Will they still be maroon gray scheduling and only in the building two days a week under the hybrid program, or will they be able to do four days a week and be exempt from the alternating days where they are a smaller population and self-contained and have unique needs?
That is a conversation that we have been having with the Collaborative Planning Group. And Mrs. McCracken Murphy, would you like to talk a little bit about that and some of the considerations that we have?
Yeah, the considerations are really the same considerations for all students, that we have to make sure that the safety and distancing, the safety standards of distancing and wearing a mask are still in place. You heard Mr. Higgins talk about us looking also at the spacing in those rooms to make sure that we can meet those CDC guidelines. And we are looking forward this week to having more guidance around what it looks like to have a one-to-one working with a student, and that includes like personal protective equipment and right down to bathrooming protocols for the safety of the staff and the students. So I think I would have to answer that, Paige, as a stay tuned, and we look forward to having that guidance within this week.
Thank you. Another question from Megan Stutz, who starts off by noting that there is still a bit of lagging going on, not only from Mr. Higgins, although I believe it's, I feel like it's better now than with the video turned off, but there's still a little bit. And I don't think we can do anything about it. And I think some other speakers have also had some lagging as well. The last speaker I heard perfectly, so it may be that we, some of us are suffering from imperfect internet connection and some of us aren't, but anyway, the question is, what about HCT, HCTC kids? Is there a possibility if in-person and then remote for other instruction? In-person, I feel is very necessary for the tech part and maybe not so much in other areas. Mrs. Bowles?
I can take that one. Our plan right now is to absolutely be open in the fall, but with the same safety precautions that are being described, we have to follow them as well. And what will happen is when students are in the building, that's when they'll focus on their clinical hours, their live work, and those types of things at that time that we have to document for state certification purposes. And then the remote time will be more of the time when we can do some of the classroom instruction things of that nature. But we'll be focused on those live work skills when they're in the building. For someone who is choosing to be remote full-time, I'm gonna have to probably meet with each family to talk to them about what that means long-term in terms of how we can make up clinical hours or certification requirements on the back end. But we absolutely can do that with each family, depending on what program they're in. Because of course, for every program, we have something a little different. We're working with every high school. Right now, high schools are all still trying to finalize their plans. And it's gonna be a bit of a beast for us scheduling-wise. And we'll probably end up having to individually schedule each student to meet the safety requirements to make sure that we're fulfilling those and at the same time, providing opportunities for the kids to get their certification hours as well.
Thank you. There's a question from Chris Popper. He just wanted to know if you could state that the totals again for each school. How many people are looking to attend each school in person based on the latest survey results?
Yes, I can do that. Let me just find the file. Based upon the survey results, and again, we had a sixty-seven percent return, but when we prorate the percentages out for the number of students who would be selecting in-person instruction if there were choice, out of an enrollment of twelve-hundred-and-ninety-three, there would be one-thousand-five students selecting in-person instruction and two-hundred-and-eighty-six who would be selecting remote instruction. And I can break that down further by school. Again, this is EEMS K through four, EEMS grades five through eight. The projected enrollment for grades K through four is four-hundred-and-one. The projected number of students who prefer in-person is three-hundred-and-thirty, projected number for remote is ninety. At EEMS grades five through eight, projected enrollment as of today is three-hundred-and-seventy-three, two-hundred-and-seventy-three prefer in-person, one-hundred prefer remote. Elsroth High School, projected enrollment as of today is four-hundred-and-ninety-nine. Four-hundred-and-three would prefer in-person, ninety-six would prefer remote. Just so that people understand why we're looking at hybrid as the only option. At EEMS, with three-hundred-and-thirty students who are requesting or preferring in-person, our capacity is two-hundred-and-sixty based upon the model classroom structure that we set up. At EEMS grades five through eight, two-hundred-and-seventy-three students prefer in-person. Capacity based on our classrooms is two-hundred-and-forty. At Elsroth High School, projected in-person, again, four-hundred-and-three, our capacity is two-hundred-and-fifty-eight. So those numbers from that survey clearly dictate that a hybrid model is the direction that we need to go. And I hope you all heard that.
That came through pretty well on my end. Another question about hybrid from Annie Atherton has to do with cleaning in between, in the middle of the week, say, if kids go, one group goes Monday and Tuesday, and then another group Thursday, Friday, is there an option, is there a consideration given to doing a full cleaning in the middle of that, of those four days?
I can defer to Mr. Turnbull, but yes, Mr. Turnbull and his staff have developed these surface areas and restrooms throughout the day with students and staff in the building. If we do end up with a model where all students are remote on a particular day, that would certainly facilitate that process for Mr. Turnbull and his staff. And Mr. Turnbull, would you like to weigh in on?
Yes, we'll be doing a lot of extra cleaning, red light way and less students, we will definitely be doing a lot.
Thank you. I have a question of my own about am I, I'm not muted, am I? I have a question of my own about drills, fire drills and other kinds of safety drills. How are we gonna manage to do those with physical distancing requirements?
We are waiting for guidance from the DOE on that. You know, it's the statutory requirement that you do the equivalent of one evacuation drill per month in public school with a an option to do warmer weather months. And we also have in our policy a requirement that we do three lockdown drills. Certainly with the spacing requirements, that presents a challenge, pieces that we do not have clear guidance on at this point in time. I would say that the evacuation drill would be easier to conduct than the lockdown because of the proximity of students and staff in the lockdown capacity. But that's one of the pieces that we're information on.
Thank you. A question on the Zoom Q and A from Andrew Ford. Will parents be given details beyond which plan will be chosen before making a decision? What will classrooms look like? What will be going on in the hallways? Traveling to classes, mask breaks, what the schedule will look like, et cetera? Knowing the type of model we choose will not help if we don't know the specifics of what is happening in each model.
I think the short answer to Mr. Ford's question, and those are all good. Those are the specific details that will have to be worked out once a schedule is determined. But simply stated, classrooms are going to look the same because desks are going to be spaced the same way whether we have a schedule that is alternating day by day or a schedule that has a full remote day for students. Off, classrooms will look the same, mask breaks will look the same. The traveling to and from classes will look the same. The biggest difference between the two options we're looking at is the schedule of days in which students will be in school in person and in which way they will be participating in a remote format.
I can also just add that we are working a kind of a day-by-day sample schedule for both models so that we can share what your child would be doing in situations as a, as a model for you to kind of understand what we're looking at. So we're trying to put that together so that parents can get a sense of what we're proposing in each one.
And Dan, there's a question from Susan Tripp. She couldn't understand from because of the audio, you're, when you discussed option two, and she was asking if you could reiterate what you said then.
Yes, I will, and I hope the audio works better. This is Tripp. If I'm understanding the question correctly, it's the option two, which would be the hybrid model whereby students who opt to have remote instruction would be able to do so for a full rank period as long as they commit to that. The remaining students who would be opting for in-person instruction would be divided into two groups. And the second option that we talked about would be a schedule whereby one day of the week, right now, we're looking at Monday, would be full remote instruction for all students. And the students in the two different groups would have two days each in which they would participate in remote learning and two days each in which they would participate in in-person learning, and it would be the same days each week. So it would be a consistent schedule each week. And I hope that answers your question. If it didn't, please let me know, and I will try again.
Thank you. I've got one more question from Deb Ashmore. Are students or parents signing a clause that that they are coming back, stating that they are coming back at their own risk? What if they can prove the schools didn't follow protocols properly and they test positive for COVID? Are the schools responsible?
Our schools will be following the health and safety guidelines as put forth by the Maine Department of Education, Maine Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, Maine Department of Health and Human Services. And we cannot guarantee that there will not be a risk to students or staff. We can't make that guarantee on any given day, whether it's the COVID-19 virus or not. As we are following that guidance and we were doing what the responsible and reasonable school department would do to implement healthy health and safety precautions. Certainly, the school department would not be liable unless we were negligent, but I think one of the pieces that would be in the written plan, a written framework, is that parents, if they have concerns or visions regarding whether or not they want to send their students back into in-person instruction.
Mrs. Thomas, that's all I've got at the time being.
Mr. Higgins, do you have more to add?
At this point in time, I do not. We have provided the information we have tonight as to the status of the framework development and our intended timeline so that we can communicate with our families so that they have a clear idea of when their students will be attending school and under what instructional model. And certainly, if there are further questions, I will try to answer them. And again, members of our collaborative, excuse me, collaborative group are here.
Mr. Marcosian, do we have any more questions? I see one in the question box.
I'm going to ask that person to provide a name because it's submitted.
Mr. Higgins?
Yes.
Can you give me the number of surveys that went out and the number of surveys that were returned, actually answered?
Yes, we had approximately, and I'm going to defer to Rachel unless we had approximately 610 survey response of the families that are in our database. So if we're looking at the number of students that we project, approximately 1,300, Mr. Hudson. Yet it was a 67% return when you factor in the number of students who we were able to account for with the survey. The numbers I provided for the overall enrollment were based upon the percentages that we received from the 67% return. Hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Thomas. Tricia Rulo. She says, whoops, that was me. She didn't realize it was anonymous. It's really easy to make that kind of oversight. So the question is, I've heard that school is considering live streaming classes for the remote students. Is this still being considered? If so, would participation be required? I have a hard time imagining students sitting through a live stream class from home.
Yes, the answer to the question is, yes, that is, is a model that we're considering. Again, one of the major and also facilitate the planning process for our teachers is to have a situation to a classroom are receiving in-person instruction from an instructor. And student class can access that with appropriate technology so they're in the same instruction while at home in a remote environment. I
Dan, we, we lost you on that one.
I think we might have lost them altogether.
Yeah, I, I, can you see me now? I can see everybody.
No, we can't see you.
Can you at least hear me?
Yes.
And I apologize. I, I think I left off with the question required. One of the things, a concern expressed by staff members, but also what the state level is, we have to. So the, the answer would be, yes, they would be required to participate. Also make one other statement.
Oh, I didn't know.
One of the things I'd like to clarify.
Dan, I think that Ms. Cormon Ramos is going to answer that question.
Guidelines and health and safety requirements as issued by the Department of Ed, the main CDC and the main Department of Health and Human Services.
Rachel, can you continue with that, please?
Yeah, I can try. It's, as far as the question about live streaming classes that is being considered, it would be including, it would be pushing into the class via remote while the class is being, if it were like an A and B group or a maroon and gray group. One, I'm not sure what Mr. Higgins was saying, but I know that one of the things that will be a factor in consideration is getting the technology that we need to accomplish that task. Right now, as you know, the entire country is trying to obtain this technology. So we're working on seeing if we, we ourselves can get it. So it's not a matter of financial issue because we do have the money from the federal government to support learning. It is an issue of actually being able to get these devices. So I think I also heard him talking about attendance. And so we would be acquiring attendance, but working with families to make sure that it was a model that was accessible for them. And those are some of the details that we're working through. I think that's what he said.
Thank you. Mr. Marcosian?
Yes.
We have more questions?
There's a lot of questions now. Eric Jameson has asked, are teachers feeling ready and comfortable? And maybe Dan's been a little broken up, maybe one of the administrators would like to address that.
Any of the administrators like to address that?
Sure, I'll, I'll give it. Try it. I'll try it. So the teachers that I have spoken with and talked with certainly have some concerns. But I think also too, they see some opportunity in some of this as well. Thinking about just how we may need to split groups that would leave at any given time, eight to 12 students in their classroom at a time, which is wonderful opportunity to provide a lot of individualized instruction for these students, given where we were in the spring. This may be a wonderful opportunity for us to be able to really see where kids are and move them forward in a, in a way that is a more difficult and challenging to do with 24 students in your classroom. So there is definitely opportunity. I think teachers are seeing that opportunity. I think they miss their students. I certainly miss the students. I cannot wait to see the kids back in the building. I'm so excited. Even if I have to wear a hazmat suit, I will welcome them back no matter what. So I think teachers are feeling that as well. I certainly don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but I think the middle school teachers want to see their kids. They want to welcome them back. And that doesn't come without reservation or concern. And I think you hear that in some comments as parents as well. So I think that's kind of where we are as faculty and staff too. There is some concern, but we are excited to see the kids and welcome them back. And we see some opportunity in this. And I would welcome any other principals or other administrators to chime in on that as well.
Same at the high school level. This is Dan Clifford. And, you know, I echo what Erica has said, and I've had some individual talks with some teachers. And there's definitely some apprehension. But I think that they'll feel better once, one, we know exactly what plan we're going with. And then two, you know, they can see the inside of their classrooms and see the minimal number of students that will be there and the distance between them. And I think they'll feel better about that. And, and especially dealing with half the population each day rather than the full population. I think that'll put their mind at ease, but I think everybody's excited to get back and they just want to know what capacity.
Thank you. And one of the reasons that we are, sorry. One of the reasons that we are taking some extra time to put in detail is that we want to make sure that the plans as, you know, as you can see in some of the questions that have been read, do reflect the concerns of both parents and teachers. So, you know, our, our meetings are rolling through many, 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 many scenarios by each department. So, you know, the health and safety, the maintenance, the, the PPE, the curriculum equity, the special ed considerations, protecting everyone's privacy. There's a lot of different pieces, the transportation. And so we, we kind of go through every single one of those at our meetings to discuss how each of those will impact the apprehension and safety and concern and ease of both families and teachers and administrators, because we want to make sure, you know, everyone feels as safe as possible. So that is why the details, you know, are, it's all in there. It's just that it takes a long time to hammer all that out because we don't come up with a plan that doesn't have answers to all these questions.
Mr. Marcosian?
Question from Daisy White. What is the protocol for the masks? Is this going to be the new normal? I'm not okay with my kids wearing masks day in and day out. The amount of virus does not warrant this kind of lockdown. My kids need social interaction and sports and classroom learning. And math doesn't make sense. Please tell me what I'm missing.
Mr. Marcosian? I hope my audio holds up this time. The requirement for masks is not an Elsroth School Department decision. It is a requirement issued by the state of Maine. It is a requirement that all students ages five and up and all staff are wearing a mask or face covering. There are provisions for a student who has a medical or behavioral issue whereby a face shield may be an alternative to a cloth face mask. But it is the requirement, just like the six health and safety requirements that we've talked about in previous meetings. They are requirements that are issued that we are required to follow.
Okay. Next, Jen Legasi says, will the schedule be maroon, maroon, gray, gray, or maroon, gray, maroon, gray? And she's saying, all she adds also that maroon, maroon, gray, gray would be best for cleaning, sanitizing purposes, keeping track of losing contact with moon purposes. And she follows up that with, thank you for all you do.
I think the maroon, 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 gray, gray, gray discussion is ongoing. And her comments with regard to the cleaning aspect of that will certainly be factored into the conversation along with all the other factors. Thank you.
From Paul Harmon, what is the current plans for sports and performing arts and other extracurriculars? Thank you.
Again, another good question. Our primary issue right now is to determine a schedule by which students will return for their academic programming. Certainly, our intent is to support our in-house co and extracurricular programs consistent with the health and safety guidelines. With regard to interscholastic sports at the high school level, the main principals association has postponed the start of their season until September 8. And I will turn to Mr. Clifford to see if there's been any further update on that over the course of today. I don't think there has. But certainly, we would like to support co and extracurricular activities for our students so long as we're meeting the health and safety requirements for all students and all staff.
Yeah, correct. September 8 is the start time for all fall sports, and there hasn't been an update since that decision was made.
Dan, you're coming in a lot better now, much better from my perspective. I hope others are finding that to be the case as well. Having said that, before you started coming in better, Tricia Rulo had asked a question about live streaming classes, and she couldn't catch it all. It wasn't all audible. So would you mind repeating it? And also she has a follow-up. It would be helpful at some point to have a clear understanding of how many, how much time students would be expected to spend watching live stream of their class. Multiple hours of this sort of class participation for elementary students sounds unrealistic and unhealthy. I understand if this does not yet been fully worked out, but I hope parents will be able to provide input.
I think I recall the initial question, and I, I think Mrs. Cormon Ramos may have answered it, but I will do it again. But I would also defer the follow-up because Mrs. Rollo was right, there are different concerns at the elementary level. But with regard to live streaming of classes or what we call synchronous learning, if I remember correctly, the answer was, would students be required to attend? The answer is yes. It is a requirement. With regard to the elementary level, I would ask either Mrs. Clifford or Mrs. Cormon Ramos to talk about that because that is that is one of the considerations that we have in developing the final model.
Rachel, do you want to start and I can follow up?
Sure. One of our big concerns is taking in consideration developmental needs of each student and their age groups. So one of the pieces that we want to look at is to make sure that time spent is based on what we know about research about students of different ages. So one of the considerations is that we are leaning away from synchronous learning for K4 students because that would be trickier. It's a lot for them to attend to. And mostly, we're thinking more about the upper grade students. However, in that as well, we're also thinking about having our students not be overwhelmed with the same type of thing. So that's one of the pieces that we're, that we're balancing to make sure, for example, that, you know, if a seventh grade student had synchronous learning experience, they wouldn't have four of them in a row. We are educators are being very mindful of what we have learned and what we know about students and what makes sense for them to best learn. And so we do know that having them doing four hours of zooming to the classroom and trying to catch what's happening is not an optimal way to learn. So we're trying to balance out pieces about remote learning, one-on-one instruction, have opportunities, as Ms. Gabby Nelly said, to really meet with students in breakout rooms. If, even if it's remote, to work with them in office hours, to have small group instruction with like Title I and other groups that are based on what students need. So we're not looking at this with kind of a wide brush saying we're going to do synchronous learning. We're looking at it in terms of the best ways that each student learns as our driving concern. And that is also true about the two plans that we've come up with. For instance, I think about the question about maroon, maroon, gray, gray. One of the things I know is important to all the leadership team is that students aren't, who do come to school, aren't not seeing adults for five days at a time. We want to make sure they have consistent communication with their teachers. So one possible model, for example, might be a Tuesday, Thursday model and a Wednesday, Friday model so that student would be able to have a consistent amount of getting back and forth to school and having contact. All of this is to make sure that it's how we best help children learn. And so we are pulling out all the tools in our toolbox, including developmental tools and special needs and individual needs and differentiation to figure out the best way to go about this. There's a lot of moving parts, but we do want to make sure that we're not putting too much on any one student at a time when they couldn't manage it because we want them above all to learn.
And this is April Clifford following up at the K4 level. We talked about that type of instruction wasn't necessarily what we thought was best for students. And we looked at having remote learning teams for students who weren't able to be there for in-person instruction. So those type of teams would be able to manage and teach students with regard to that. So it is a, a, we're just really trying to consider what's the best for all students.
We piloted something like that in our summer school program. We had several teachers who were working at a particular time each day directly with students on Zoom. And then we had one student, one teacher, excuse me, who's had a different type of role where he developed videos and programming for students who weren't able to meet at the time that the class was meeting. So he had a different model for teaching that I think can be also used as we think about it so that students depend, no matter the situation, will be able to have access to an equitable curriculum across the board.
Thank you. Mr. Markosian?
A couple more. Andrew Ford, again, says, to restate my question, will parents be told what protocols will be followed in each school setting before needing to make a decision on a remote versus attending school in person?
The protocols that we're following right now are to determine which schedule would be best, and then to implement all the specific details. Certainly, as those details are identified and put into place with regard to a plan, we will entertain any requests from families, whether they want to choose to be in a remote only, or be part of the hybrid where they have a combination of remote and in-person instruction.
If I could add to that, Mr. Higgins, April Clifford. One of the things that we're considering to help Mr. Ford with this question is having teachers make welcome videos once they have their classroom set up. And in the beginning of the year during their professional development days, to send to parents, so that students are going to know, and parents are going to know what the classrooms look like before they actually arrive at school. And we'll talk about, you know, through those videos, talk about what that's going to look like for students and having those shared individually, because some classroom setups are a little bit different. So those could be shared with families before, but it wouldn't be tomorrow, the next day. Those would, that work would happen during the professional development days at the end of August and early September.
Thank you.
I have a question from Jasmine Ireland. Are there FERPA concerns about live streaming classes?
Yes, and I'll answer that first, and I will let soon-to-be former IT director of Mrs. Clifford weigh in also. FERPA is a significant concern with regard to live stream classes. With regard to owls that we talked about before, an owl is a device that is trained to follow the sound in the classroom, whether that sound be coming from a teacher or a student. We're looking at other technologies whereby the microphone and camera will be trained on the teacher, so that students in the classroom would not be viewed by others who would be viewing from a remote location. Mrs. Clifford, would you like to add to that?
I think that you pretty much got it. So you can frame the camera, so it just, it's only focused on the teacher, and it'll move as the teacher moves. It will pick up conversations with students. In addition, there's a capability to put a display on this unit, so that the teacher, if they had students in class and remotely, that the teacher could look up and see the remote students that are connected via Zoom and be able to interact with them that way.
Thank you. I have a question from Valerie Webb. On the length of the day, has there been any discussion on the length of the day during remote learning days for each grade?
Can you repeat that, Paul? I didn't hear it. Maybe some of our collaborative planning groups did, if they'd like to take one. I did not hear the question.
All right, it's about the length of the day. Has there been any discussion about the length of the day during remote learning days for each grade level?
There has been, there has been much discussion on that. One of the pieces is, or several pieces, depending upon the age span, the age level, grade span, what is the appropriate amount of time for students to be participating in an online instructional program or a synchronous program? Those are all parts of the details that we're working on over the next couple of days to determine which is the most appropriate schedule. But yes, there have been conversations on it, but we have not reached a final answer. I would also ask any of our collaborative, excuse me, collaborative planning group, if they'd like to add to?
As we're having discussions about that, we are taking the feedback from the student surveys, the family surveys, the staff surveys, and working all of that in. I know, speaking at the K4 level only, we've had discussions about this at the leadership team level, and so that there are conversations happening about that to try to find, A, what's best, what's the best education we can provide for kids? And also, following those guidelines about length of time on the computer, and also the attention span of students while they're on the computer. All of those information is being worked in to those plans.
And I would echo that. That's been the same conversations at the middle level as well.
All right. I have a question from Robert Miller. What special accommodations are being made for teachers that are in a high-risk group?
I would like to address that. In fact, I thought the question disappeared out of the chat box, and I just sent a typed answer. But we sent out a communication several weeks ago to all staff, asking them to notify our HR office if they knew or expected that they would either be in a high-risk group or have a medical condition that may prevent them from returning to in-school or in-person work. We're working directly with those staff members to address the needs, to determine if there may be any of the leave provisions that we have, either through the Coronavirus Family Leave Act, the Family Medical Leave Act, or our collective bargaining agreements. Also, we're looking at, as we're talking about a hybrid model, whether those staff members, if they're not able to return to in-person instruction, if they would be willing and able to serve in the capacity as a remote-only teacher. So we're trying to address those on a case-by-case basis, because, you know, we talk about the health and safety of our students. We also need to be concerned about the health and safety of all of our staff members as well.
I apologize. That was my fault it disappeared. Sorry.
No problem.
Just a question, another question from Susan Tripp. Is there a way for internal parties to let their feelings be known to the board? And I, in addition to attending meetings such as this and engaging in the public participation part, they can also email the board members on our school's website, or the email addresses of all board members and individual addresses. You can also address the entire board at board, B-O-A-R-D, at elsworthschools.org. A question from Markina Ford. In the question about performing arts and sports, you did not address the performing arts that happened during the school day as part of the students' academic classes. Drama, dance, vocal and instrumental music are an important part of many students' academic learning, as well as social emotional health. With the continuously updating guidelines and studies being released from U of Colorado and other performing arts students and teachers' needs and concerns being addressed, how? And I'll also add, there's a follow-up question from Paul Harmon, who had asked about extracurriculars. He's asking if there's specific guidelines about performing arts. I guess, would she, the answer, because mainly addressed to sports. So those are two questions. Both involve performing arts.
I'll start with Mrs. Ford's question, and that is a good question. I'd also defer to our building-level administrators, because those are conversations they're having at that level. But yes, those activities are very important to our students for all the reasons, Mrs. Ford. We are going to have to rely on the health and safety requirements that are in place, ensure proper spacing, and prevention, to the extent possible, of transmission of virus, and helping to support those students in participating in those activities while in the school. I would defer to the principals for their conversations with their leadership teams and other staff members on that. And then we can try to address Mrs. Harmon's, and maybe her question is, or similar, are there specific performing arts questions and guidance? I'm not aware of anything that is specific that I have administrators on that.
In terms of the activities that happen during the day, we are working with our unified arts teachers to make sure, to ensure that even with an alternating schedule, that students still get all of those opportunities. Certainly, it may look a little bit different, given the health and safety guidelines, but we are having those conversations and working with the unified arts staff to make sure that that happens.
I have a question from Monica Andrews. Are the school nurses involved in discussions to optimize schedules?
Our school nurses are here, and I would let them go ahead and answer that question.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Are the school nurses involved in the discussions to optimize the school schedules?
The school's schedules?
Yeah, that's, that was the question. The schedules of the schools.
Not so much the schedules. We're, we're certainly involved with setting in place some best practices as far as managing the health offices, establishing a preschool screening that staff and student need to go through, but I wouldn't say schedules.
The work that they are doing with helping us with the multiple health and safety requirements that we have, their work is critical to how the schedules are going to work. But they've with us through our collaborative planning meetings in a constructive and positive and supportive way in sharing their expertise. And I would also mention they're working with our school health consultant, Dr. McGregor, and with the Department of Education's school nurses consultant.
Thank you. Mr. Markosian?
Sorry, I muted myself. Another question from Valerie Webb. How much of the load of academics will be on the parents during remote learning days? Will parents be required to spend a significant amount of time teaching their kids? Thinking of many families with more than one child, or parents who will still be working during those remote learning days, and how parents can juggle the expectations?
Speaking from my perspective, in providing an equitable learning experience for our students, we need to ensure that they have access to their teachers and instructors and support staff. The intent is not for parents to be the teachers. We certainly need the support of our parents to help their students who are involved in a remote learning environment to remain engaged and be part of the process. But the intent is not for our parents to be the teachers. And I would ask if our building administrators would like to add to that?
One of the things we're keeping in mind as we think about developing our remote learning plans are trying to lessen the AMALIX, for example, so that there is a central place where kids can get on. As I know that there's parents who would like to be able to do their own from home, and once their student is on with their teacher, and also have the work that is explained during contact with the teacher. So we saw all those comments that were in the family survey, and have been thinking about the best ways to do that as well, and have less places for kids to have to. We're spending a lot of time to streamline the platforms that students will be using, so that there is less frustration about having to go in between different places to get information, and also different places to be communicated with. So those are pieces that we did see loud and hear loud and clear in this, in the surveys, so that we can try to streamline the process and make it easier for students to learn more independently, maybe not completely, but more independently than was needed as we addressed this crisis in March.
I'll also add, and I think I talked about this a little bit last week, is that we did take some of those survey results into account. And when you're talking about the alternating schedule, their students will be in-person to receive that direct instruction and prepare them for those days where they're not in person. So they have, they'll be prepared for the remote learning and can hopefully do it somewhat independently in terms of, at least, middle-level students. I think those families who choose to be all remote, that might be a little bit of a different story, but certainly, those in-person students will get their in-person instruction and be prepared for their remote days.
Thank you. And then more, Mr. Markosian?
One more. I can't. It's a lot to unpack, so I'll have to take a look at it. But that's all I have so far.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Miller?
Can we talk real quickly about protocols for parents if they have a child that they don't think has COVID, but maybe has another very common childhood illness like a cold?
I'll start with that, then I'll defer to the medical experts in our room. One of the pieces is our school nurses, in consultation with the school nurses group and Dr. McGregor, and the guidelines have developed, I think, a final version of what that pre-screening symptom checklist would look like. But that is one of the conversations we've had. Some of the symptoms of COVID-19 are the same as symptoms of other viruses or colds. So I'll let, I think Chris has already opened up her mic, so I will defer to her. Good question.
Hi, yes, this is Chris. We do have a, and I'll read from it directly. Prior to going to school, staff, students, or parents of younger students must determine their health status by conducting the self-check by asking the following questions. Do I feel well today? Do I have a cough or sore throat? Do I have a fever or feel feverish? And take the temperature, is it 100.4 or higher? Do I have shortness of breath or difficulty breathing? Do I have a new loss of taste or smell? Am I fatigued? Have muscle or body aches? Do I have a headache? Do I have congestion or a runny nose? Do I have nausea, vomiting, or diarrhea? Do or have I been around anyone exhibiting these symptoms within the past 14 days? Do or have I been living with anyone who is sick or quarantined? Have I been out of state in the last 14 days? So it's a significant list, and many of the symptoms of COVID-19 are symptoms of, as we mentioned, the common cold, or a tummy ache, or something else. However, because we're, Jackie and I are in a position of safeguarding students' safety, staff's safety, teachers' safety, we have to err on the side of caution. So if we have a child come to our office exhibiting any of these symptoms, they will be sent home.
Would that include Ash as well?
No.
So it would include if they had been around anybody with the symptoms within the past 14 days?
Correct.
But they don't have them themselves, they don't have to exhibit those symptoms?
Correct.
So basically, you don't want the parents to then send these kids to school if they meet any of that criteria?
That's true. That's true. And then if a child does come to school and And then if a child does come to school and exhibits, you know, complains of or exhibits any of those criteria, then that child will be sent home. And once a child is sent home, what we encourage is that the parents contact the PCP, notify them of what the complaint is, and possibly have a COVID test done. Because if the child tests negative, they can return to school after 72 hours of being symptom-free. However, if that child tests positive, then that's gonna, we'll have to contact the state and we'll have to follow the protocol that they recommend. But it's gonna allow us to better track in Ellsworth positive cases. So it's gonna give us more accurate information, certainly more accurate information than the city's been receiving so far.
I think another piece, just to add to that, you know, we've all done this over the years either as students or in our employment lives, where we get up in the morning and we don't particularly feel well. We may be exhibiting some of those symptoms. Any of us have just said, we're gonna struggle on through and we're gonna go in and we're gonna work our way through it. And when you're looking at a potentially, not just potential, but a dangerous virus like this, even though we have a low number of reported cases at this point in time, it's something that we really have to consider. Is it in the best interest of us and the other people in our building, students and our staff, to go in if we're not feeling well? And I know that's a difficult decision for many people. But I've heard people mention this evening, are there some new normals coming about? That's something that we really have to strongly consider because again, what's gonna be coming to the board is gonna be predicated on what is in the best interest of the health and safety of our students.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Yeah. Carrie Jamison again. She's asking if we have polled teachers in terms of their tech readiness and also their mental health readiness in returning to their classrooms.
I think the first part of that question, we write up Director Coleman-Ramas's alley. And the second part, Mrs. Director McKeckren-Murphy can talk about what we have in place to support the mental health readiness of all of our staff members.
So as far as readiness, we did send out a survey to all of our teachers at the end of the school year and asked about their preparedness for moving forward with some form of remote education. And we have designed trainings and webinars and support for teachers throughout this next month based on what they've specifically asked for. We are also providing an ebook and a book and a set of videos about distance learning by authors that we've been working with previously, Fisher Frye and Ha, who talks about effectiveness of learning and the best ways to do that. So teachers will very soon have access to suite of trainings on engaging students via remote learning and classroom norms, management, things like that, as well as trainings on the Google Suites, Google Classroom, Seesaw, Zoom, breakout rooms, whiteboard features, things like that. So we are designing PD for teachers in two days in August as well as at the end of the month and programs that they can access on their own time as well.
We also have, in consideration of staff members, we have the natural helping resources that have always been a part of our schools, but we're also looking at doing some offerings that can help people learn a little bit more about self-care. Today, we recently, we just discussed having yoga offers to teachers if they wanted to be a part of that. That looks like that will be moving ahead. And I am still waiting for some more information from other people to come in about maybe offering some mindfulness opportunities. But we're looking at how can we give staff a chance to build their self-care skills as well as have a time and a person to talk to if they have issues during the day. And it's really, right now, I would want to reiterate to staff that the door is always open with any of us who are here as your supervisor or administrator. And if we don't know, we can't help. Please let us know if you're struggling. But we are very mindful as a team that as we develop the mental health document, that it's not just the kids that we're looking at. We're also looking at the staff as well. And that is a very important component of our conversations as we move forward.
An additional way I think that can help teachers relieve stress in a way that helped me quite a bit was knowing that I had time to plan when I was a teacher. And so we will be able to use some of our federal funds and there will be an email going out in the next 24 hours to all teachers to let them know that we are planning to use some of our federal funds to support them in planning and making more of their teaching both ready for a hybrid model and for a remote model so that they have the time to explore other options, look into things like flipped classrooms, developing videos for their students, having a library of support modules for their families, and really being up and ready to go. So for teachers who find stress relief by having the time to develop their lesson plans and to think carefully about how they're going to move forward, we do want to provide that time and pay them for their time to be able to invest in the school district and the students of Ellsworth.
Thank you. Mr. Marcosian?
Yes. Dee Goodman writes, what happens when someone tests positive for COVID-19?
Go ahead, Chris, I'm sorry.
We contact the CDC and ask for their guidance and the local health officials and ask for their guidance. As far as family members go, say if there's a child in the family, that child is gonna have to isolate also.
In addition to that, depending upon the nature of the exposure or the positive test, we would be looking at assistance from the CDC in contact tracing within the school and determining which areas of the school would need to be closed down to any student or staff traffic and cleansed and disinfected deeply before we can allow people back into those areas. So we would certainly be abiding by what CDC guidelines are.
Who's Dan?
He's on mute. I think he was finished. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Marcosian, give any more?
Yes. Fawn Harmon sent a follow-up. I guess her impression was that Mr. Higgins was not aware of any specific guidance on music and performance arts classroom instruction. And there is some guidance that has come out that she forwarded a bunch of material to me from the address to music educators. From, I'm not sure where it's from, but anyway, I didn't hear, I don't recall what the answer was that Mr. Higgins gave to our previous question, so.
I think there was a question with regard to specific guidance on performing arts. I know that the main principal association has sent out numerous updates with regard to the activities that they sponsor. Included in that is information on visual performing arts, which Mrs. Wright talked about. But that is a document that I have not read the most recent updates on that. But consistent with what Ms. Wright said, there is some guidance there that is being factored into conversations at the.
It does, I actually read it recently, and it does talk about singing and musical instruments and the transmission of, you know, airtolized issues, that kind of thing. So we're gonna be taking that into guidance as we think about how best for students to be able to work with their teachers in the safest possible. I do know that all the principals think it's extremely important that we have a consistent arts, PE, and music schedule. And what that will look like and how we will do that will be more consistent than it was in the past because they're very important pieces of every child's education. And so both of the models chose would allow for ways to address that. And so we'll be taking that guidance consideration.
Thank you. And Mr. Calandro just emailed me with the, forwarded the updated DOE guidelines that he received on Friday. So they're pretty up to date. Just received a few, three days ago, and I'm sure that you'll get that. Another question from Stacy Foss says, hi all, first of all, my heart goes out to all teachers. All the teachers, board, and staff are having to make such tough decisions that you all face to keep our kids safe in such crazy times. I pray people realize that you are all not making the rules, but find yourselves being forced to ensure health mandates are met with student safety at the core. This is such a hard time, especially when social interaction is so important for all students for their mental state and development, especially in younger students just beginning school. So she then talks about her daughter's stated concerns, and she did give me specific permission to mention her daughter's concerns. She has been working this summer and been required to wear masks and found it miserable, especially with her eczema and the added use of gloves. How is it possible to ensure safety and cleanliness with all the factors involved? She says, I'm also concerned as my daughter has a severe, whoops. Sorry, I pressed the wrong button here. Her daughter has severe peanut allergy, and it used to be that she could only be affected if she ingested it, but now if she comes in contact on the surface of her skin with peanuts, it could cause a reaction. And she's asking how these type of concerns, people with allergies and wearing masks and have trouble difficulty wearing them, how will that be addressed?
I have a general answer before I defer to the school nurses. With regard to any type of allergy, peanut allergy, please contact the school nurses so that that can be addressed. With regard to the face coverings, with the situation that you described, and we had this conversation around our table this morning, from my perspective, that would be an opportune time to take a look at whether or not a face shield would be a proper alternative to a cloth face mask. But again, I would encourage you to have the conversation with our school nurses. And Jackie and Chris, would you like to follow up on that?
Well, this is Chris. I think considering the situation that was described, it would be reasonable to consider an alternative to a face mask. Whether students have a preference for a face shield as opposed to a face mask, we're still trying to figure out if in those situations we're gonna require a medical note. But that seems reasonable.
I think to follow up with what Chris said, in some cases, if it's a medical situation, it may be requiring a note from a physician. But we also talked about an element of common sense and appropriate judgment on the part of our staff. And again, it seems with the description that Mrs. Foss is providing, I would concur with Mrs. Reinig that that would be a reasonable accommodation to move towards a face shield as opposed to a face mask. And I also appreciate Mrs. Foss's comments that there are certain requirements that we are required to follow and they are put in place for us. So appreciate her comments on that also.
I've got a question from Barbara Bayer. Are there plans in place to recruit extra substitute teachers? Given that many current substitutes would be of high-risk age and also given that staff may not be able to come into work if they have minor illnesses, serious illnesses, or even COVID exposure? We may have, I think, what she's trying to say is we may have higher absenteeism due to health conditions that in the past, teachers would have, with the sniffles or feeling a little bit under the weather, may have just decided to come to work anyway. And now everyone's, you know, we're not gonna see that happening in the months ahead. So substitutes, how are we doing on the pool of substitutes?
We annually put out a call for substitutes, and I would agree with Mrs. Bayer that this year is gonna present unique challenges. We always have a cadre of substitutes that work with us on a regular basis. But that is gonna be a challenge for us with COVID, also with what we would project as an increased absenteeism rate because of the self-check of symptoms. We will continue to put the word out that we are looking for substitutes and try to actively recruit and see if we have people who are interested in coming in. So we would encourage you, if you're watching tonight or if you know anybody, let them know they can fill out an application by contacting the superintendent's office. That is 664-7100. And you can ask for Teresa to provide an application for people. Thank you for the question.
Ms. Mellon?
Just a quick follow-up to that question. So if somebody wants to substitute for you and fill out an application or any other documentation that they need to bring with them just so they can be pre-prepared with everything they need?
Mrs. Miller, I don't have the application in front of me, but I would suggest they call. Mrs. Austin could send an application to them, and everything that is required with regard to paperwork would be listed on that. That way, people could be prepared when they submit that paperwork. Thank you.
Mr. Marcosian, do we have any more?
Yep. Question from Michelle Cody regarding teachers. If I have a runny nose and I have to stay home, although I feel fine and ordinarily would go to school to teach, are teachers going to have to use their sick days for that?
That's one of the many questions that we have had posed to us. And in looking at the legal guidance, we look at if a staff member stays home, I believe the answer is yes, it would be a sick day that would be used. But there are also provisions in the coronavirus federal leave act that may apply. With those specific questions, Mrs. Cody, we will look them up and provide you with a specific answer. Appreciate you asking it.
One thing about the funding that we've received from the federal government, one of the chunks of funding we've received, it's a short-term grant. And so it provides for us to be able to pay substitutes due to that leave act. So we certainly wouldn't be making those decisions based on any financial restrictions. It would be on the safety of the teacher and by the, you know, laws. So that wouldn't be a concern because that is the thing, when you brought up the substitutes as well, that we are anticipating a cost attached to that to be able to support term substitutes for those very reasons. So there will be finances in place when we need to do that.
Mr. Marcosian, any more?
We've got one more follow-up comment from Carrie Jamison. She's a teacher in another district, and she says, she had asked a question earlier about polling teachers about their feelings about returning. She says, so much time and energy has been devoted to student safety, and I am glad to hear that teachers are also being considered. I think it would be good to poll your teachers about their feelings about returning. I feel very fortunate that my school has given me the choice to teach. I feel very fortunate that my school has given me the choice to teach remotely. Good luck.
Well, I appreciate the comments that Mrs. James is putting forth. And certainly, part of our ongoing work through the documentation we sent out and asked to be returned to our human resources office, and also our work on determining what the most scheduled is going to be, I would anticipate there would be opportunities for our staff members who either need to be removed from the schools because of a health or medical condition, or who are willing to teach remotely, that those opportunities would exist.
Great. So Mrs. Thomas, I don't have any other, I don't, unless I missed something, I hope it'll be brought to my attention if I did. I don't have any other comments or questions at this time.
Thank you.
I would, whoops, I would like to do things. I want to remind people who are watching this meeting live on Facebook. I know from past experience that there are questions and comments on the chat function of that platform, but I'm monitoring questions on Zoom and on my email, and it's a bit beyond my capacity to also monitor questions and comments on Facebook. So I apologize for that. But if you do have a question or comment, and you're watching this on Facebook and it hasn't been answered, please send an email to P. Markosian, M-A-R-P-M-A-R-K-O-S-I-A-N@ellsrothschools.org, and I'll be happy to relay your question to the group. And I also wanted to just say that this is a very fluid situation. It's continuously evolving. We convened this meeting tonight to talk about reopening plans, even though we don't have a plan. We don't have all the details of the plan fleshed out yet. And we keep getting updated guidance from the state. Things keep changing. I know there's a lot of stress out there in our school community, which includes teachers, staff, students, parents. Everyone wants to know what, what the plan is so they can make the proper choices that are best for their families and the best for themselves. And we would love to have had all that in place by now. It's just, it's, it hasn't been possible because we're still working on it, because, like I said, it's still evolving. So I just want to thank everyone for understanding that and for having some forbearance for the process. We are gonna get there. This is not just us going through this, it's the entire state, it's the entire country, the entire world. We're all struggling with this unprecedented, unprecedented situation. When I look at a map of coronavirus cases in the United States, I see that we're very fortunate here in Maine to have so few. I think it gives us more options, and I think we'll make the best of that situation. And I certainly hope that we don't get an explosion of cases here. I don't think we will, but we'll deal with whatever hand we're dealt. But right now, I feel like we're in one of the most, most fortunate places in the country to be facing this crisis. And I have, not only that, but we, that's partly because of the extent that coronavirus has affected our population, but it's also because of the dedication and compassion and professionalism of all the staff in our school department who have worked so hard on this. You know, summertime is normally a time when educators get to kick back and rest up and relax a little bit, and that has certainly not been the case this summer. So I want to thank everyone who's been working hard on this and applaud your efforts. And we're very fortunate to have the people we have in the Ellsworth School Department. That's all I have to say.
Well said, Mr. Markosian. Any further comments? Mr. Higgins, do you have any closing remarks?
Appreciate Mr. Markosian's comments and would echo them. You know, our staff members are working very hard to pull all this information together. And also appreciate the fact that our community members, even though they want the information as soon as possible, they're understanding that it is a very fluid and ever-evolving situation. But please rest assured, we will continue to work. And as we evolve over the next several days, come to a model for instruction that we can put out to families and come forward next Tuesday evening with a model for the board members to consider and hopefully be able to approve with sufficient detail. And I want to thank everybody who participated this evening, not just our collaborative, excuse me, collaborative planning group, but all the folks out there who have viewed either through Facebook, Zoom, and asked their questions. Your questions are helpful, they're informative to the process, and we appreciate it.
Remind everyone that our next meeting is August 11. Starts at 6:30. And I believe the board will be in council chambers. And people will still have the opportunity to email Mr. Markosian. And with that, I think we should adjourn.
Thank you, everybody. Have a nice night.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.